Hello and welcome to the Lower Mayfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting today, July 1st, 2020. Just today, if you want to call in for public comment, you dial the number 646-558-8656. And then you'll enter the meeting ID number 831-7237-4140, followed by the hash or pound sign. If you are watching on Facebook or YouTube, please understand that there's a slight delay in the video, so call early if there is a certain agenda item you would like to call on. We're ready to get started with the meeting. Fred, if you could take it over.
Thank you, Monica, and welcome to this July 1st edition of the Board of Supervisors meeting. I call this meeting to order, and I would ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in this world. I'll now call the roll. Supervisor Blondie?
Here.
Supervisor Grenier?
Here.
Supervisor Lewis?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
Present.
And I'm here. We have a quorum. And at this point, before we go any further, I am going to turn the meeting over to our solicitor, Mr. Trulov. Mr. Trulov, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the last day or two, a number of matters have occurred that affect the content and conduct of this meeting of the Board of Supervisors. As most are probably aware, a petition for injunction was filed yesterday in the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas, seeking to stop a vote on the sale of the sewer authority previously listed on tonight's agenda under item Roman 7. Earlier today, a supplemental petition was filed claiming that information surfaced allegedly disqualifying Doctor Weiss from being a resident elector and not entitled to sit as a supervisor. Today, a brief teleconference was held by the assigned judge in the injunction matter, Robert J. Mellon, who issued a stay of Agenda Item Roman 7 from tonight's agenda pending a hearing on the merits of the case. I must emphasize that today's order is not a ruling on the substance of the petitions, nor a granting of any specific relief. It is essentially a pause in the action with an opportunity for the agenda items to be relisted if the court, after a hearing, determines that to be a proper, to be proper in light of the allegations. Consequently, item Roman 7 from tonight's agenda will and has been removed. Insofar as the allegations involving Dr. Weiss's residency are concerned, we just received late yesterday information supporting the allegations related to Dr. Weiss's claimed invalidity of residence. We are reviewing the information and analyzing against the applicable legal principles and will make a determination well in advance of the next Board of Supervisors meeting, at least based upon the information we have right now, most likely early next week. Please note, as a solicitor for the township, I am instructing all board members to not discuss any issues related to the sewer sale or the Weiss residency issue, as ongoing police and DA investigations are occurring, as well as the current litigation. In an abundance of caution and to minimize any issues with him chairing the meeting, Dr. Weiss is for tonight handing the gavel to Vice Chair Grenier to run the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trulov. And with that, I turn the gavel over to Mr. Grenier.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. Oh. Supervisor Lewis, have your hand up?
Yeah, I move to suspend the rules and elect the Vice Chair, Dan Grenier, as Presiding Officer Pro Tem for this meeting and interim chair until such time as the Bucks County District Attorney has completed a review of the allegations related to Supervisor Weiss's residency within Lower Mayfield Township.
There's been a motion. Does anyone want a second? Mr. Trulov, does that differ in any way from anything you just said?
No, it fails for lack of a second.
Okay. All right, there's been a motion, no second. So moving, moving on to item four, COVID-19 update. Monica, is that you?
No, it is not me. My item is later in the agenda.
Okay. Kurt, is that?
Yep. So we've just put a notice up because there's been lots of questions about going to green, whether or not that means the township building is open. At this point, it is not. We will continue to work remotely. Staff is being staggered when they come in. We have two staff members from the township building who work in Park and Recreation, who do the dog park and pool. They're the two that have been repurposed, calling all the senior households and the Chief Kalusi's Senior Partner Program. But we are moving to the community center in an order that when we do bring people back, that we'll have more space in the main floor of the admin building to create space for those remaining employees. We have placed up, as I had said a couple of months ago, sneeze guards coming into the building that would cover anybody coming into the building and protect employees. And as I've said before, policies in place when that time comes in regarding mask wearing by employees, the public, what have you. But at least for the time being, under green, it still is, indicates that if employees can continue to work remotely to do so, which is the intent, at least for now. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kurt. Chief, did you have any specific COVID updates or no? Are you okay?
I do not.
Okay. Moving on to item five on the agenda, community announcements. Monica, if you'd like me to do these, I can for you. If you want to add anything, please feel free. Okay. The Parks and Recreation, Digital Recreation Opportunities information can be found at the township website under the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec website. Did you have anything more specific to add, Monica?
I do. It's very exciting that we have adapted a lot of our programs to fit within the green parameters of Governor Wolf's order. We're starting summer camp on Monday, which is going to be on a week-by-week basis. You can enroll up until the Monday prior to the next week of camp. It will be first come, first served. We do only have 60 spots available. Everything will be at Macklesfield Park. In addition to that, we're offering a camp-in-the-bag option, where you can purchase bags each week, or you can choose to purchase all eight weeks, all the way until the school year. Weekly activities, arts and crafts. You might find jump ropes, yoyos, all kinds of things in the bags that surprise each week. Very creative. You can purchase those now, and you can contact Veronica, veronica.g@lmt.org to find out more information. Also, July is Park and Rec Month, so we'll be celebrating Parks and Recreation a variety of different ways and do online surprise activities and events to get people engaged and motivated. But please enjoy our parks and our trails if you don't get out there on a regular basis. July 17th in specific is Park and Rec Day. And for Park and Rec Day, we're going to have our first movie in the park at Memorial Park, and it will be School of Rock. And on the 18th, we'll follow that, and we'll have Grease, two days in a row at Memorial Park. So we're very excited about that. And those are our biggest announcements as of right now.
Very cool. The School of Rock is first?
Yes, School of Rock.
And Grease is the next day?
Grease is the next day, yes.
Is it a costume attire or no?
If you so choose to be in costume, you may.
Hey, Dan?
Yes?
If I could also add, please, that the LMT's Farmers Market is up in, to be considered Farmers Market of the Year, essentially. It's a contest that you can vote online, being run by the American Farmland Trust. You can go to farmland.org, marketfarmlands.org, and you can follow along on the Patterson Farm website. They also have the information up there. And I'd also like to let you know that they want everyone to know that the corn is in and will be available for tomorrow.
Can you repeat that website one more time? I didn't write it down properly.
Marketsfarmland.org.
Marketsfarmlands, all one word?
Yep.
Okay. I want to make sure I go to that and vote accordingly. Maybe even post that on Facebook. Nice job. Any, any other supervisor have any announcements or anyone else? All right. All right, next item, moving right along, is item six, is the consideration of the approval of minutes of May 20th, 2020. They're amended June 10th, 2020, and June 11th, 2020. Would anyone like to make those? Dave, would you recommend doing those one at a time or singularly?
You could do it either way. I think probably because we have an amended set of minutes, it's probably decent to do it individually. And just for everybody's benefit, they're being amended because Ms. Herman had submitted information that was inadvertently omitted from the May 20th minutes, and they have now been included, and the record now will be updated to reflect that from the RRTS relative to the Trenton Airport matter.
All right, so I guess we, let's do them one at a time.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 20th amended.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Monica, do we have any public comment on this particular item?
Yes, we do. Sue is on the line.
All right. Come on in, Sue. Sue, were you there? Hi, Sue, if you unmute yourself, please, as you know, please state your name and your address and provide your comment, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. I just wanted to thank the board for correcting that omission.
Well, thank you for your guidance on that. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
That's all. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Monica, any, any additional public comment on these minutes?
No further public comment.
All right, then I'll bring it back. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of June 10th, 2020.
Would anyone like to second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Monica, I'll ask again, just in case. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Any board comment, since I jumped a little quick? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of June 11th, 2020.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
All right. Any board comment? Any public comment, Monica?
No public comment.
Thank you much. All right, then I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Mr. Trulov, quick question for you. Maybe it's a throwback to last year, because I'm sitting in his chair for, for a meeting. But it, could we, could I add a public comment section right here and maybe since it was published later in the meeting later, that we, we keep, we, we keep one at the end, just in case people are waiting? Could we have two?
Chair, if you would like to do that, it would be a prerogative based upon what the practice has been, yes.
Okay. Monica, is there anyone?
Yes, Chair, I move to suspend the rules and bring public comment forward. So did you get a public comment now?
I understand. I'd like to do that, and I'll, I'll second it, just so we can have a quick conversation. Okay?
I'm just confused, because we just said that we shouldn't amend the meetings when
they haven't been published. So that's, you know, whatever. But we just had a whole conversation about making sure that we don't change them and agendas and make people think that something going on. But whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, the only, the only reason to, if, if there's anyone sitting on the line now, because we've had some feedback that people are sitting on the line for a long time and drop off and want to make comment, if there's anyone on the line now to make public comment, we could take some now. And then I would personally like to give them an opportunity early and then for the, since it was published as, as F between, as item, originally as item 14, between zoning inspection and planning and discussion items, we can make, I would like to maintain it there as well, just in case people are waiting around to comment then too. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Trulov?
Yes.
Monica, is there anyone? And if there's no one on the line now, we can just keep moving forward. But Monica, is there anyone on the line now for public comment?
Yes, there is. There's four people. Peter LeChance would be first.
Okay. Hello, Peter, please. Peter, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please state your name. We would appreciate if you could state your address. And then please note that we are trying to keep public comment to approximately three minutes.
That's fine. Peter LeChance, I'm elected constable. I don't state my address because I'm law enforcement, but I do live in Lower Mayfield, because I'm elected here. You can tell that. As many of the people on the board know, I've been adamant in the last year about us getting into a situation where we can look at various options with regard to the sewer, the disposition of our sewer system, whether it's a sale or something else. And admittedly, I have been involved in the recent stay lawsuit, as well as the, the request of the DA this morning to get involved in a, in a quo warranto proceeding if they so deem that necessary with regard to the disposition of Dr. Weiss's ability to be on the board. So I just want to get that all out there, so there's no secrets. My, my background, as many people know, many people might be listening into this who don't know, is I used to run the American arm of a international engineering, water and wastewater firm. I've been involved in privatization. I've done a lot of stuff in that area. I've been very disappointed by this board's performance, by certain people's performance on the board in regard to these, the sewer bids. I just want to make sure that we're going to move forward looking at all options, which should include, and I'm not saying that it should be the answer, but which should include the possibility, which we did not do before, of forming a joint authority with surrounding townships to have, to take control of our sewer system. And, and this is something, an opportunity that was missed under the current regime, and I think it needs to be explored, and it's a shame that it was not looked into. I have been a very big proponent over my lifetime of privatization. I've also been a very big proponent in my lifetime of municipalities keeping their assets if they can run them correctly. And I think that a joint authority can be an opportunity to do just that. They have lower debt interest, and they have a lot of advantages over the private sector. We have a lot of advantages in terms of we can have a seat on their board versus with a PUC-regulated company. That does not happen. I was also very disappointed that the, that the supervisors didn't really consider the lease deal for 50 years, I believe it was, by a joint venture that would at least give us back our assets 50 years later. So there you are. That's the, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Monica, next caller, please.
Next caller is Marilyn.
Hi, Marilyn, please unmute yourself. Marilyn?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address before you speak.
Marilyn Horek, Kings Road, Lower Mayfield. I have to agree with what Peter just said, that we have not had an opportunity to really look at the ramifications. And this is being pushed at a time when we should be more concerned with the health of the people of our community than with the sale that we really haven't had a chance to examine, to look at this more deeply than it has been. But I think Peter said it all. And we've been a 40-year resident of this thing. The other thing that has never been brought up, none of us in this township has a sewer meter. Our sewer bill is based upon our water usage. Now, some people have installed a separate water meter, which does not go into the sewer, if they have a pool or if they have underground sprinklers, and that water is not into the sewer system. Now, here in the last couple of months, we have seen things that have been happening that as a resident or as a group of residents have really not been able to be consulted on. There's a lot of stuff going on in the last two years, and it's, it hasn't been able to, it hasn't reached everybody. Now, if they're going to look at selling the sewer system, how are they going to be able to evaluate the usage without putting in sewer meters? And who's going to pay for the installation of sewer meters to each house? Or are they going to rely upon the water, the water meters? If they're going to insist that we have sewer meters, who's going to have, check on the installation? Mr. Ferguson, do you have any idea?
I'm unclear of what you-
I'm, I'm going to jump in there. I think any, as I said at the very beginning of this meeting, any discussion about the sewer sale or about the claim of Mr. Weiss's residency is currently in litigation, and any aspect of it should not be commented on by anybody from the township tonight, board members and administration, so.
Okay, I'll save it for later on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Monica, any, any other comments?
Sue Herman is next.
Hi, Sue, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. As you recently did, please state your name and your address, and please complete your comment.
Susan Herman, President, Residence for Regional Traffic Solutions, PO Box 285, Newtown, PA. At the June 29th meeting of the Trent Mercer Airport Review Panel, that's LMT's Review Panel, the panel said that they'd be writing a letter to the board that was to be read during the Board of Supervisors meeting this evening. We're not sure whether that has come to pass, but if this has been done, we respectfully request that that letter be read now, during public comment, rather than at the end of the meeting, so that the public can be part of the process.
Mr. Chairman, may I chime in?
Absolutely.
Sure. So Sue, I was, I did read over the minutes from the meeting on Monday. I will be discussing that during board updates later in the meeting.
So that's during supervisors' report?
Correct.
I just want to say that's totally unacceptable. That's at a very late hour. The issue with the Trent Mercer Airport is that as it expands without proper environmental review, there's the risk of irreparable damage to our drinking water, and the public deserves to hear about that issue early in the meeting, rather than late in the meeting when nobody's watching it. So we respectfully ask that you change that thinking.
I encourage everybody in the public to listen to the supervisor reports, which are coming right up.
So you, have you moved them forward in the agenda then?
James, I'll jump in here. Sue, we're going to have a very brief, I, I think our agenda is much, much more brief than, than is typical, so there's not going to be a long wait time.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, thank you for your comments. Monica, and anyone else?
Yes, Brian McMar-
Hello, Brian, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and your address, and please-
Sure.
Please state your comments, and we try to keep them to three minutes. Go ahead.
Glad you mentioned three minutes for me, not anybody else. But Brian McMar, 1412, I didn't hear, 1412, Heather Circle, Yardly 1. I'd like to thank both you and John for moving the public comments to the beginning of the meeting, reversing past, this past year, how it's been moved to the end, and over Chairman or Supervisor Blondie's objection to that. I'm glad it was moved up, so we can get this going. There was a question I asked and wasn't answered in last meeting on the advertising of the overlay, and that was about spot zoning. So because I'm now, I have three minutes.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I want to, no, no, it's my three minutes.
Both you, hold on, both of you, please, please, please take a pause for a second. Three minutes is at the discretion of the chair. If there's back and forth with a supervisor or staff person, we, it's more than okay to add some time. So if Supervisor Blondie has a response, then, then I will not cut you off at three minutes for that, Brian. So Supervisor Blondie, did you have a quick?
I just want to be very clear. I asked for a clarification of what the process was, because I, I do like rules. I didn't object. I fact said, Brian, whatever you guys want to do, and here you are for public comment. So just want that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Blondie. Continue, Brian, please.
And I know, you know, Dan, I think Dan- And, and I know, you know, Dan, and I think Dan and John were the only ones who have ever objected to the public comments being at the back of the meeting, one of those brought up many times by Zach Roman. But the definition of spot zoning is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of an owner of such property and to detriment of other owners. So the ordinance you've advertised, I think clearly meets that definition, leaving the tangent up for lawsuits and/or, I think Mr. Lewis alluded to it, a couple meetings ago, about this overlay, that eventually being used in all the OR district, including the existing office buildings, to potentially, potentially put into, turned into apartments and/or big box stores themselves. And then, one point I was trying to get at last time, when I was cut off, is that the, the bonuses the developer wrote into them, this ordinance, and how we have a bonus for electric car charging stations, green roofs, energy efficiency of the buildings, and saving historic sites. Well, in reality, you guys can write this ordinance any way you want. You don't have to follow what the developer put out in front of you. So there is really no bonuses. You can write an ordinance that if you want to put a big box store in the OR district, you have to save all these historic sites. And you don't get to go from 60% open space to 15% open space, or you don't get to add an extra three apartments per unit, per acre, because you put an electric car charging station in there. I don't think the average Lower Makefield resident, you know, cares too much about electric car charging station, a green roof, or the energy efficiency of a building. Yes, they care about saving that, that house and the historic structures there, I guarantee you that. But some of the things we've all been fighting for, and with Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Granier, and McCartney, who was only there for one meeting when I was on the park and rec board, the need for extra recreation spaces, so maybe the bonus included some more fields on there. Maybe you don't get the full 200 apartments, because we know from past meetings, that's what the developer says. He needs to make his money back on that, on that site. And hopefully, everybody realizes that these are two separate developers who are joining together just for this one development, try to push their, their cause through of, which was always sold to us on, helping the village out. That's what the apartments were always there originally sold as. We got to put these 200 apartments in, because we got to help the Edgewood Village out, which Edgewood Village is, the Giant and the McCafferys. So I know how Wegmans helps those two out there. And I don't think anybody wants fast food drive-through restaurants in this site. So you don't fall behind this, this ordinance that the developer wrote, and I know I brought that up before, why are we letting the developer write this ordinance? And I get in the past that it's been done that way, but you guys have the opportunity to write this ordinance any which way you guys want, and that could be, so not to include these bonuses, and give this developer extra density, give him drive-through restaurants, give him three extra apartments per acre. This should be stuff that we could, to benefit the township, and not just cram as much as you can into these, these 40 acres. And this does need-
Ms. McMar-
Thank you for the comments.
Appreciate it. And we will record this on the beginning. During public hearing as well, in 45 days or so.
Yep.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Monica, is there, are there any other commenters at this time?
Yes, Robert.
Robert, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and your address, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
All right, Robert Abrams, 652 Teach Drive, Yardley, Pennsylvania, 19067. That brings up the first of my public comment. When we would watch this on TV, if we did, we would see the Lower Makefield Township Auditorium. You ask us where our address is, I think it's the liability of everybody showing up on this TV screen, not only tonight, but going back to when the virtual started, to announce the address that they're broadcasting from. I see no reason not to. It would clear up a lot of problems, and would probably, we'd be able, able to figure out this other issue. Next point. I'm understanding that, and I'll keep the name quiet for right now, that someone on the TV screen right now wanted to withhold the reports and, some of the reports and documents until after the vote on the sewer system. I don't consider that to be very transparent if it's true. And I can tell you right now, my response that I got for the farm on my last right to know is severely lacking. I believe there was more than one study for, for the farm across from Shady Brook, the Wegmans project, and I was only appointed to one, the one website. I asked for it unredacted and unedited. So this idea that the public is putting in right to knows, and is not getting complete and full responses, is a very, very, very serious issue. It shows lack of transparency, and, and, and I'll let it go with that. Next reason, next thing, we are now green. There is absolutely no reason why you people cannot be at the municipal building, six feet apart, broadcasting from there to us all. Now, it would also eliminate any question as to where anybody's living, or where they reside at, and it should have been done as of June 26th, or whatever the date was, last Friday. And it wasn't. And there's got to be a reason for it, and there's got to be an answer for it. And I don't know if this, if this is part of this, but, I lost my train of thought here. Mr. Granier, you recused yourself from the sewer vote. You said you might have a conflict of interest. Can the public understand a little better what that conflict might be? I, I'd like to hear about that, too, if you're recusing yourself. It just can't be, well, you know what, I'm recusing my, because I think, there's got to be a better reason than that.
Okay.
But right now, my biggest issue is, we shouldn't be watching you wherever you are sitting at home. And in fact, I want for tonight, that each member on this board, and I'm looking at the engineer, Mr. Lewis, Mr. McCartney, Mr. Weiss, Chief Calusi, Ms. Granier, Mr. Trulove, Mrs. Blundy, and Mr. Ferguson, to all announce where you are broadcasting from. I don't think it's unreasonable. You ask the residents, the residents are asking you. Thank you, have a good night.
Sure.
Granier, I would like to make a comment, please.
Sure.
I am the open records officer, and I take all requests, including the rambling, unreadable requests that the caller just called about. The last meeting, he had indicated that he wasn't given all of his information from a previous open records request. I called Mr. Abrams and read him what he had wrote, which was one large run-on sentence rambling around the page that three staff members could not decipher. When I asked him and read him what he said, he had trouble telling me exactly what it was in writing, and then asked for additional information, but he replied within 35 or 40 minutes. His most recent open records request, that had several items that were on the website, and much of what was written was unreadable, my assistant called him and asked him specifically what he was looking for, and pointed him to the website. So instead of announcing tonight that he didn't get something that he wanted, he could have just as easily did what we did two weeks ago, and asked for something that we couldn't determine, and he would have been given everything that he wanted, the same way he did the last time, when we couldn't make out what he was saying and writing.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you and your assistant reached out to, to Mr. Abrams to try and clarify his, his wants, needs, et cetera. And I would encourage folks that if they want to understand better something going on in the township, if they want a piece of information, explain to them, if they want to understand why or how we're doing something, really anything. Don't, please don't assume the worst. You don't always have to fill, and Kurt, you've said this a million times in the last couple of years. You don't always have to fill out a right-to-know request. It's okay to call or email Mr. Ferguson, or the township, at the, at the general email, because it'll get to the right person. And they'll, 99 times out of 100, they'll, they should answer you openly, honestly, with a direct answer. And if you have any questions after that answer, because maybe there's something lost in communication that happens to all of us, just, just ask the question again, say, I didn't quite understand. Can you, can you further explain? We have a great group, we have a great staff, very knowledgeable, very helpful. Before I was a supervisor, I asked questions of, of, of chief, of, of other staff members, and they were incredibly helpful. So I would encourage everyone in the public not to assume the worst. I know that seems to be the standard these days across the country with various things. But please, don't assume the worst. Just ask the question, and they'll probably get a good answer that way.
I'd like to point-
Kurt, you, there you go.
I'd actually like to point out one more thing, if I could, for the public. When there is an extensive request, thousands of pages of documents, we have the ability under the law to have a 30-day extension automatically granted to us to fulfill those requests. I understand the urgency of which Mr. Abrams approaches these requests, even when we can't read them. And that first request that he just called about was provided to Mr. Abrams, and I believe two days, even though the law allows for us to have five days. And as such, we communicated back and forth with him to try to get him all the information that he requested. If Mr. Abrams would like to call tomorrow, and he knows where he's message, either me or my assistant will call him back and give him absolutely everything that we have.
Appreciate that, Kurt. And, and Mr. Abrams, specific, your question directed to me. I am recusing myself from a vote on these, specific vote on a sale to any party, as I currently and, and previously have worked for, as you may have seen in my, one of my Facebook posts, the number 1, 2, 3, and 5 ranked water and sewer engineering companies in the world. So I have my firms, which are all, all those firms, which are Fortune 500 companies, where I've had leadership positions, may at some point in the future have any one of the potential bidders as a, as a client. I, in my personal history, I have never worked with any of the bidders. And when I've done an internal conflict of interest review with, with our council, they are not, as far as I can tell from the databases available to me, they are not currently a client of my, of, of my current firm, and, and most especially not my current client, my specific current client. So out of an abundance of caution, and after speaking with the solicitor, it has been determined that the best, the best path forward on, on the, on any, any potential vote on a specific sale, that I will recuse myself on that. And I have, I will maintain that throughout the life of, however long this process moves forward. I hope that's clear. Monica, any other, any other callers?
Yes, we have Tim on the line.
Okay. Tim, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes.
I can hear you, Dan. This is-
Please state your name and your address, please, and then, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Go ahead.
Sure. Tim Malloy, 1902 Makefield Road, Yardley, PA.
Thank you.
So I guess my first public comment is in regards to sewer. I was involved in this sewer issue, I guess, four to five years ago. I, I was very involved. In fact, I put in the Freedom of Information request for the RFPs, and they were, there was a lot of discussion among different groups, a lot of public comment, and a vote, and, and the board decided not to sell to Aqua America Corporation. I saw in the newspaper, June 22nd, that the, the bids were received, and I was surprised to find out Saturday morning on Facebook, that the, that a vote was set. So, I mean, it may have been put on the, the website. I mean, I really don't know. So I guess my comment is, like, a few other people is just to suggest that there's several public meetings, that the, the bids are discussed, the long-term ratables are discussed, and then let the people really understand the issue before making a decision. I do have another comment. When I was, I mean, when I was on Facebook Saturday morning, I was asking if the board could have public meetings, now that we are in green phase. I suggested a couple ways that could take place. Other people had suggested a few ways. There was discussions concerning opening the pool on Facebook as well, where people were also making the case of how that could be done with protocols, social distancing, tickets, so many people coming in, so that you wouldn't exceed 50% of the capacity. And Mr. Weiss had commented that we really couldn't do that. It would, we couldn't really do that in green phase. I think it was also discussed last time about the capacity of the room and violating sunshine laws. But I feel in green phase, we could potentially have a public meeting. And other people agreed. They agreed with Chairman Weiss's comments, and someone texted me and said that, that Mr. Weiss was in Florida, posting. And, and it upset me that, that he was arguing that he couldn't have a public meet, this public, this meeting, in public, in green phase, but he wouldn't have been able to attend because he's in Florida. So I guess the first que, I have two questions. Is Mr. Weiss in Florida now?
First, Mr. Malloy, at the beginning of this meeting, because there's outstanding litigation involving the claim of residence issue, there's going to be no comment or response about that.
Okay. So I have one more question, David, and is, when the, when the board voted last week for the overlay ordinance, to advertise the overlay ordinance, was Mr. Weiss in Florida for that vote?
He's not going to answer that question. And I will say-
No, that's not, Dan, Dan, you can answer that question.
No, no.
Yeah, just be honest.
It's a residency issue.
Okay.
And that's something-
Fair enough.
It's in litigation.
Fair enough, Dave.
Okay. Thanks.
So I just to conclude, listen, you have very, I mean, you'll find that the, the public is, is, is very open. We understand there's challenges in the township. I think Marilyn mentioned the pandemic, and focusing on public safety. I mean, I would agree with that. You know, when you had the planning commission meetings, you know, the rooms were packed with residents. I was, I was very proud to hear people in public saying why they supported the overlay ordinance, who, long-term residents, some long-term residents were against the overlay ordinance, and I was very proud. So public meetings are really the way to go, if you could really do it, so everybody hears both sides of the issues, because there's a lot of experience in the township, a lot of depth. And I think we should just, you know, listen to that, and then move forward. And, and then whatever way the vote goes, you know, the, the vote goes. But the township needs to hear each other, and understand the issue, and then support you moving forward. And I know you have to vote, but the most important thing is to get the public to understand the issue, and listen to each other, and leverage our experience to help you come up with the best solution for the sewer. So that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. We appreciate your comments. Monica, do we have any other public commenters?
Yes, we have Tom.
Dan, I'd like to say something before we take the next public comment.
Sure, go for it.
I guess this is a question for Dave, just to try to clear up some of the air, and not trying to address the issues we're not supposed to address. But certainly, since I've been on the board, at least two supervisors have participated from me, in meetings, pre-COVID, when they were not in the township via phone. And it was well-known, and it was appropriate, and I, I think it was appropriate then, and I think it was appropriate now. So I guess my question is, Dave, is, is that appropriate, that a supervisor can-
And I'll explain the circumstances. This is pre-COVID, so it's nothing to do with why we're doing it the way we're doing it now. And by the way, all of us are aspirational to get, to use the green face to get back to normal. It's clear that, given the distancing that's required, and some of the other measures, that I believe, despite everybody's wish that we can return to in-person meetings, that we would violate the Sunshine Act if we did it, because we'd have to exclude potentially people who would want to come in. And, you know, it, once you, once you put a limit, then you're, you're, you're having a problem with the Sunshine Act. So we have to have the same format, basically, for everybody, either one way or the other. Now- having a problem with the Sunshine Acts. We have to have the same format basically for everybody, either one way or the other. Now, to get to Supervisor Bundy's question. Uh, it's been the law in Pennsylvania for years that, uh, public entities can allow for remote communication in the meetings for various reasons, if the, uh, remember, other members of the board agree that the person's reasons for being out of town are, are legitimate. Uh, people do have, uh, go on vacation, they have vacation homes. Also, people go away for work. Uh, I believe one time Supervisor Lewis was communicating from New York City while he was, uh, on a work trip. Uh, Supervisor Brenner, I think, I don't remember where he was, but he got called in, and he's, they're not the first two. This has happened. I remember back in oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, uh, I believe, uh, Supervisor Maloney, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, participated remotely. I think he made one, one of the first ones. So, and, and it's not unique to Lower Mayfield. This happens a lot of places before the, the pandemic, when people traveled a lot for work. That, that was a fairly common occurrence. I mean, the people wanted to, it didn't happen every week, but, uh, it was something that was, uh, not uncommon. And it's probably gonna remain that way for the foreseeable future, just because of the way our, our, our lives are structured these days. So, uh, I think the law is trying to reflect the, the reality that sometimes people just can't be where they need to be physically. But that, given the technology that's available, uh, i- it's, it's appropriate. Once the technology is proven to be, allow people to participate, be interactive, which clearly we can be tonight, that, uh, it's, it's an acceptable means of, of conducting, um, a ten, meeting and having attendance that way. So. And by the way, there's a case law on that from the Supreme Court of Pennsylvan, or Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania. Uh, it was decided in nineteen ninety-one. It was the first one where that was tested, so.
Thank you. And thank you, Dan, and thank you caller for waiting.
Okay, so, uh, I believe it's Tom. Could you unmute yourself, please?
Can somebody unmute me? I don't know how to unmute myself.
You're okay, you're okay. Please state your name and your address, and then please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
It's Tom Will, three eight nine Trend Road in Lower Mayfield. The way I look at things right now, there's at least, at least three major issues in front of the township that need resolution. One, of course, is the overlay ordinance. A second is the sewer. And I have read all of the documents that are public on the sewer. And to me, there's a lot of open issues that haven't been addressed completely, accurately, or looked at other options which co, should come into play. So my judgment is, is that the information available on the sewer to date is completely indef, insufficient to make a decision. The third item is the financial status of the township. And everybody can talk about what it is, but the bottom line is, we're many millions of dollars in debt and nobody has addressed a solution, except, well, let's just sell the sewer and we get money back. That's not a solution. We need, and I've said this numerous times to the supervisors, we need a strong, good financial analyst in the township who speaks for the township and looks out for the township to get the best options relative to the financial status of the township, how to resolve it, and then maybe after that, with proper study, you could make a intelligent decision on the sewer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Monica, do we have any other, um, commenters?
Yes, Frank is next.
Hi Frank, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address, and then please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Absolutely. My name is Frank Guy. I live at, uh, twelve fifty-two Dickinson Drive. And, um, so, uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I, I appreciate you, what you're doing. I know it's, it's difficult to work like this, but I appreciate what you're doing. So I, I, my comments are kind of very fundamental and, um, to just the, uh, the basic life of, uh, in Lower Mayfield. And first of all, I'd just like to say that I want to extend, uh, sincere heartfelt thanks and gratitude to the police of Lower Mayfield, include, you know, Chief Caluzzi and the entire, uh, Lower Mayfield Police. I've been in the township for twenty years and, uh, you know, they are certainly a key player of creating the environment that we live in, and I've had to call on them several times. And they've responded with, you know, respect and, you know, honor, and they've done a fine job. And I just wanted to say that very publicly right now in this, uh, troubling time. And I hope their morale is up, um, and, uh, and, you know, I, you know, all these criticisms of police and all of this, I, I hope that they continue to do the job that they're, they have done, um, with, in good spirits, knowing that they have the, the, um, you know, many of the residents' support. Um, which leads me to the second point is, um, you know, there's obviously a lot of, um, noise in the news and, you know, it is the news and, you know, sometimes it's, um, you know, we, we, we hear what we're supposed to hear, not necessarily everything, but the, the, the criticism of police as a whole, I just want, and certainly this all movement to defund and take money away and all these other things, I do not support that particularly for our police. And I also, you know, it's quite frightening to me to see a breakdown of basic law and order. Um, again, in the news and, uh, other, otherwise. And, uh, you know, everyone has a right to protest. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about just the general breakdown of law and order to a level of anarchy that I don't think should be tolerated by anyone in our America and particularly our community. So really what I'm asking for, from, from all the supervisors is just, you know, again, I, I, not, this is not disrespectful, it's just, I'm quite frightened by what I see. And I just, you know, and this isn't to me a right or left issue. I really don't care about that. Uh, this is just a fundamental issue of, of our basic way of life and the way of law and order. And what I'm asking for is if the Board of Supervisors can just affirm for me, give me some comfort that we are a town and a community of law and order and the processes that we have, we're going to support if anything really does take a crisis turn here. If, if I'm clear enough in that.
Thank, thank you for your comments, Frank. Uh, I, I'll just, n- not to speak for Chief here or anyone else, but, um, we have it, there, there are a lot of very difficult, uh, situations going on throughout the country right now. We, we all see it. Um, some of them are very unfortunate and very tough to, tough to see. Um, um, that being said, I think in our, in Lower Mayfield Township, I, I'd say we're lucky, but in, in reality, it's due to a lot of hard work from a lot of good people, uh, led by our chief, to have a police force that is top-notch. Um, and, and, and they can say that because they're an accredited police force. They've gone through a very difficult accreditation program that covers a lot of the, I would say covers a lot of the items that folks are calling for throughout the country to improve other police forces. And they've done it, they've implemented it, and they've shown great success. And I think they should be commended for that, and we're, we're lucky to live here and have this group, group with us. Um, uh, there's always room for improvement, and, and that's part of the accreditation process, is looking at how to improve in the future, and they're always doing that, and very self-critical. And, um, I've had nothing but positive experiences personally, prior to being a supervisor even, I'll say that. Um, and I think, uh, most other people have. Chief, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but.
Well, I'd just like to thank Frank for his comments, and his comment about morale, well, his comments certainly increase morale. And I want to thank him for taking the time tonight to say that. Um, all the issues going on in the township, it's very appreciative that he took the time to comment on the police department. And I'm sure all my officers are watching or will watch eventually this meeting. And really do appreciate comments like Frank's and all the good people in the township who voice their support for police, who send in cards and gifts, and we try to post and we try to reply to them as much as possible. And, um, I just want to say that it's greatly appreciated. And, uh, thank you also, Dan, for your comments. And, um, you know, I, I enjoy support from the supervisors. I hope it continues. I hope, uh, people don't waver and cave to pressure. And, uh, we will continue to have a law and order township as long as I'm the chief here.
I hear, I hear the, uh, the men and women in blue like, like pizza, so wink, wink to those watching.
Yeah.
Um, thanks for that, Chief. Uh, Monica, any other, uh, any other public comments?
Yes, Mike is next.
Okay. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Sorry, the Zoom thing announces that we switched breakout room, so I think that's why you keep on getting delays.
Yes, and that's fine. I wait till I see your name. If you could please state your name and your address, and please try to keep your, uh, comments to three minutes.
Sure, uh, I'll even set a timer. Um, so my name is Mike Stemley. Uh, I am, uh, resident of, uh, Ox, on, on Oxford Valley Road. Um, I, uh, I, I, I kind of, I came on to talk about the sewer stuff. I sent you guys all an email uh, yesterday evening expressing how I've had experiences with public utilities in the past that have been, uh, run by private entities. Um, there's no accountability there, right? Like, uh, at the very least, right now, with the, e- even with the, the rate hikes and everything else, we at least all still have a vote in what goes on with the sewage system, um, which is better than what we would have if we had rate hikes with a private company. Cause then you gotta deal with regulatory boards and you gotta try and push that stuff down that way. Cause they're not directly accountable to the people who are receiving those services, right? When you've got a public utility like that, it's not like, i- i- it's not like Burger King where you could just choose to go to McDonald's instead, right? You, you got a sewer hookup and there's only one company allowed to service it. Um, so I, I, I want to make sure that, uh, you guys understand that my concern here, um, I, I, I'm not worried about any sort of impropriety. I'm sure you guys are all acting in what you think is the best interest of the township. Um, but I want to make sure that everybody o- o- on the, on the Board of Supervisors is really thinking clearly about what the, what the taxpayer experience is going to be here. We're going to end up, i- i- if we end up selling, which I understand you guys can't discuss at the moment, um, if we end up selling, we would then be shifting from a situation where I have a vote to a situation where I don't have a vote. Um, I find that a little problematic. Um, and then while I was sitting on hold, I heard two other things that I'd like to very briefly remark on. I've still got a minute. Um, one is the, uh, the overlay, um, regarding like fast food and apartments and all that. Um, one thing that I keep on hearing a lot of my neighbors talk about, I'm still relatively new to town. Um, but, uh, one of the things I keep on hearing people talk about is taxes being really high. The only way that taxes get dropped around here would be either cut services, which I don't think anybody's in favor of. We don't have that much in the way of services, uh, from a, you know, we, we, we don't have a massive set of services that we're offering people, right? We don't have massive public housing or anything like that. What? The only other way to do that is to bring in more revenue. So whatever we gotta do with the overlay to make sure that we are bringing in revenue in the most responsible, ecologically sound and, uh, uh, manner, which also respects our historical sites and landmarks and all that, um, I'm totally in favor of. Um, and then as I'm finishing up here, uh, I wanna, I, I wanna second my support for the chief. But I also want to say that I think that one of the things our community could really benefit from is a, uh, i- i- is some statement of transparency on what procedures are being done, so that as people are concerned about, you know, over policing or, uh, perhaps police being a, a, a little bit rougher than they should be, or perhaps profiling, like, it would be great if the police department would be, would, would just go an extra step. Give us that transparency, tell us what the procedures are, put it all up on the website, make it real easy for us to see. Let us know how people are being trained so that we can feel better about the policing that's happening in our community while we're also supporting you. Um, so, sorry, I went over like fifteen seconds and I apologize. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank, thank you for your comment.
Briefly the question about the police, uh, information. That's a, a a sensitive topic because, uh, a lot of information is not disclosable because if public, the public is aware of certain, um, trained police responses in certain situations, that information could be used to, to the detriment of either the police officer or police officers or people that are trying to help. So there, there, some of this information may be released, but from a right to know and, uh, perspective of what the act called CRIA, Criminal History Record Information Act, as well as involvement from the DA's office, there is a, uh, a line that is kind of drawn where some information is protected as confidential. So, to the caller's question, I think, you know, certain information possibly is disclosable. There's been some right to know, uh, cases involving some of this. But there's a fair amount that is, uh, is not for the reasons I've stated. So. I just want, uh, I just want the residents and the citizens to know that, um, I'm always approachable. They can call my office at any time and ask to speak with me. Um, any questions that they have, I'll try to answer them, um, as best I can without, again, revealing anything that if went out to the public would be, uh, hamper public safety or hamper the safety of police officers. And, um, as a matter of fact, I enjoy those conversations. And, um, I think that, um, we should have more of that. So, um, challenging any citizen that if they want information or they have any concerns, to reach out to my office. Uh, if I'm not there, I'll certainly get back to you soon as possible. We can discuss whatever topic you want to talk about.
Thank you for that, Chief. Monica, is there any other comments?
Yes, Mark is the next caller.
Okay. Hello, Mark, can you hear us?
Uh, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and your address, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Will do. Mark Simon, and I live at two oh six two Leadham's Drive in the township. Um, first of all, thank you, all of the supervisors for your service. Also, thank you to the chief as well. You guys have very difficult jobs and I certainly appreciate the time that you spend. Um, life's demanding enough, and so, thank you. With respect to the, um, to the sewer, I have essentially one question. Um, it's got two components, and that is whether it is less expensive or more expensive for the township residents twenty years out and then forty years out, if we keep the sewer system in our own ownership or we sell it.
So I'm gonna be, I, is that, you may have not heard my statement at the beginning of the, uh, meeting. Uh, sewer sale issue is now, uh, a matter in court, and I've directed supervisors and administration to not answer any questions now because there's ongoing litigation, so.
I'm fine with that, and I understand it, but I am going to ask you to resurrect my question once that litigation has been settled.
And, and it certainly is, is your right to do so, uh, and that's.
Well, I'm, I'm asking the board to keep it, um, essentially diaried so that someone can ask, you know, answer that question, but that's all.
We appreciate your questions. Are, are, any, any other questions, or are you completed?
Uh, no, I have one other question, which is, uh, has anybody considered with respect to the overlay, uh, and the Prickett property, the impact of Lower Mayfield becoming essentially a rest stop on ninety-five, or I should say now two ninety-five?
I think I could take that question quickly. The composition of development that is proposed, uh, even though I voted against the overlay, is it one that would make it a rest stop choice, uh, for residents? Because there are better choices with gasoline closer to the exit. Um, and over time, people are, they know those exits. Somebody used to commute to Wilmington, Delaware, five days a week. I can tell you exactly the best bathrooms along ninety-five, uh, between two ninety-five where I live and, uh, the exits in Delaware where I got off. So that's not the worry you should have.
Well, fair point.
If you'd like, I'll tell you the best exit numbers. There's a great Sunoco, but no, go ahead.
No, no, fair point. Um, so I appreciate that. And, and I was thinking more along the lines, like, if I'm traveling with my family, I know the first consideration I have is food. So if there are good restaurants there, I know from Philly to Princeton, uh, the only thing that exists pretty much is essentially the Wawa in Bristol, and then you have the off-ramps of the Oxford Valley Mall, uh, but coming southbound. Um, if you don't hit Princeton, you're gonna, you know, you might stop at Yardley. Anyway, it's just a consideration. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. You all are much nicer than I am. It's, it's just a gas station with snacks, and that's with a bathroom, and that's it until we need, when, when we're empty of gas, then we go for the next one. Jeez, um, and John, I want a map at some point, please. Um, Monica, any other, uh, any other public comment?
Yes, the next caller is Jaclyn.
Okay. Hello, Jaclyn, can you hear me?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address, and then please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Jaclyn Denton, Friar Drive. Um, I would first like to thank the LMT police for all their work, and we're hoping that they stay strong here in Yardley. I would first like to thank the LMT Police for all their work and we're hoping that they stay strong here in Yardley. Second, I would like to ask, is it true that Patterson Farm is a site for dumping millings of asphalt? And is, if it's true, do they plan to remove it due to concerns about pollution of the farmland and the creek from tainted runoff? I understand that township officials gave no response when asked about this recently.
And can I answer that?
Yes, please. I have answered either four or five separate emails in that regard. It is not a dump site. There are several things on that site going on. First, there has been millings that we've had piles down there over the years consistently to start. The millings are themselves dry and they're not being dumped there. We have leave, there's two things going on. We have leaves on the site that sit on rolled millings for our leaf program. Because without having those rolled millings, which is essentially the equivalent of like a, like an asphalt pad or a concrete pad, is that would turn into a mud pit down there had we not had those. That is now, it's about eleven years old, starting to come apart when we pull leaves out as part of the leaf program. So that's what part of the pile is for. The other part of the pile is for the farm down there as a storm control measure. That is regulated by DEP from a permitting process where those millings are used as berms along the various roads that service the farm. And that is used as a storm control measure to have flooding from going from one field to the other. DEP or called the Bucks County Conservation District is overseeing all of that. They've also weighed in on the piles that we have down there as has our engineer, Mr. Pokel who's here, Mr. Hucklebridge who's also an engineer, a professional engineer. Those will be used throughout the year. Again, they are dry. There is a lagoon there that serves for runoff. Most of the sheen that you see on the runoff that I've gotten, some, some animated phone calls about is more from the runoff from the leaf pile that's there and it's serving its purpose. So in the end, all of those millings will be used to protect that leaf pile, to protect the site from becoming a mud pit and then to be used for the farm in coordination with DEP as a storm control measure on the site.
Thank you for your response and I think Fred Weiss should resign. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Monica, any other public comments?
Yes, Richard's on the line.
Richard, can you hear me?
I can. This is Rich Preston.
Okay, Ri- oh, hi, Mr. Preston. Please state your name and address and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome to our meeting.
Okay, yeah, Richard Preston, fifteen twenty-two Stapler Drive. I'm calling on behalf of the Airport Review Panel with just comments to, we had emailed Supervisor McCartney today with comments from our Monday public meeting. And so I wasn't sure if this was the best time to present those comments or he would want to discuss that when he talked about the, the different panels and things he oversees.
Yeah, so I don't know if you heard Ms. Herman call in earlier. She, she raised a similar comment and Mr. McCartney, unless I misheard you, you were going, there you were. You were going to provide an update on the Airport Review Panel's activities during the supervisor reports. Is that correct?
That's correct, Dan. I'll, I'll go over that during supervisor reports.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that'll be fine.
It'll be coming up shortly, Richard.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks. All right, thank you for your comments. Monica, do we have anyone else on the line?
No more comments.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Item, item eight that was on the published agenda is no longer being discussed this evening. So we're going to move on to what is on the, I'm not sure I'm on the right number.
I'm sorry, I think you, you don't mean that. I think you mean number seven, as Dave announced is off.
Oh, you know what? I had a mark there. You're, you are absolutely correct. Item seven is no longer there. So now we are going to move on to Engineering Report.
Pokel. Yes, hello. I'm happy to report I am broadcasting from my dining room. My wife has allowed me out of the basement for this evening. And so.
Show off.
Yes. Also, just a quick announcement that Remington Vernic Engineers has opened their Bucks County office in Lower Makefield Township within the past two weeks. We are over at the, we have offices over at the Lower Makefield Corporate Center, the North Campus in building one ten. There's ongoing construction. Otherwise, I'd invite people in to stop in and say hello with masks on, of course.
Welcome to town, sir.
Yes, we're happy to be there. So moving to the agenda items, the first item is a pay application for Laurel Lane Drainage Improvements Project. This is a project where the contractor has completed the work. The final punch list items that they were, have addressed, they completed some earth disturbance and so this would not be a final pay application as we're withholding a small retainage of money within the contract, four thousand dollars and change is what we're withholding. Just until I'm certain that the areas that they did disturb are restored and show vegetative growth on there. So tonight, we're consider, I'd, I'd like the board to consider a pay application number two for the Laurel Lane Drainage Improvements Project in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay, consider pay application number two for the Laurel Lane Drainage Improvements Project in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars even.
I'll second.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any board comment? Okay, hearing none. Any public comment?
No comment on this.
Thank you, Monica. That being said, I will call to question. All those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Continue, Mr. Pokel.
The second item is to consider additional emergency repairs to the twenty twenty Bike Path Maintenance Project. Over the course of the, the work for the Bike Path Maintenance Project along Heacock Road between Oxford Valley Road and Covington Road, it was observed that there's a stretch of the bike path north of the northern leg of Covington Road where it ties into Heacock. That is an asphalt path that connects to, for about two hundred and fifty linear feet, it's an asphalt path, then it connects to a concrete walkway. And it is in a similar disrepair to the bike path that we were working on. In discussing it with township staff, we thought that it was prudent to reach out to the contractor to get a price for completing the asphalt path in that stretch north of Covington Road. We were presented with a estimated change order in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. I believe that number is fair. It is based on line item pricing that we received in the bid and it is, it is something that will ultimately be determined by the amount of quantity that is actually placed in the field. So it's not a, it would not be a final amount, but it's an estimated amount. In addition to that, there is a stretch south of Oxford Valley Road along Heacock Road where some potholes have opened up in the bike path to the point where cones have been placed because they're becoming a safety hazard. It was initially, there was some question as to whether the township actually owned that section of the bike path or a residential property on which this bike path fronts owned it. I believe it came to light earlier this week that it is indeed the responsibility of the township and so I am meeting with the contractor tomorrow morning to review the limits of work for repairing the, the sinkholes along the bike path in that section. So if we're, if we're to make a motion, it would be to consider authorizing township staff and township engineer for, to pursue additional work on the twenty twenty Bike, Bike Path Maintenance Project.
I'm sorry, would there be a not to exceed amount for that, Andy?
You beat me to it, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, 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 that's exactly where I was going.
So right now, we don't have an estimate for what the scope would be south of Oxford Valley Road. So at that point, I, it would be up to the board. I mean, I, like I said, I, I'm looking at it tomorrow with the contractor, so.
Dave, would it be appropriate to have two separate motions? One, since we, we have a, we have an estimate for the first part with the thirty-nine ninety-seven twenty and then two to authorize our engineer to ask, I don't know if we need the second motion yet since we don't have an estimate. Because he's gonna have, we don't have to authorize him to have that meeting, right?
No, the meeting's fine. It's with the results of the meeting that it would be crucial for the board's determination because it's, you know, depending on the amount and the scope and everything else, it may be, maybe more involved in terms of what has to be done.
So would, would it, would it be appropriate to have a motion on the first item where we have a dollar amount with a not to exceed of, I don't know if we do it to the penny, maybe we do it if, if four thousand is.
Four thousand would be appropriate for something.
That would be appropriate, something like that? That makes sense to you, Andy?
Yes.
Would anyone like to, and, and, well, we can ask Kirk questions in a second. Anyone, would anyone like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, so I'll, I'll start board comment. One real quick question, Kirk, then I'll, I'll open up to my fellow board members. And maybe if I misheard this, I apologize, but it sounded like this was an additional item to the twenty twenty budget. So my only question would be, it sounds like it's something that's necessary, obviously. I would just want Kirk, from your angle or your perspective, how you feel four thousand dollar project fits into the budget that, where we're at right now this year.
First, I believe if I'm not mistaken, Andy, we're starting from a point where we're, with what we've done so far, that we're under, correct?
Yes, so the, the amount of quantities that were placed within the contract were less than what we expected for the, were less than the final bid quantity. So we would receive a credit from the, the original bid. And those quantities haven't been determined yet, so I would say it's probably in the, on the order of magnitude of a thousand dollars that we would see a savings within the, the current budget.
Right. So we're starting off with the basis of about a thousand dollar savings, Dan, and if we're talking in the end, what could be not to exceed four thousand. You know, that's coming out of the par correct budget. I don't see that we can avoid it. It's not a sizable amount of money. It's not under the general fund, but we'll have to sit and monitor it. And as long as, as long as I'm here, Andy, let me ask you a question. The area that you're going to look at tomorrow, we're going to look at in terms of comparative size, I, I realize you haven't analyzed all of this. How is it in comparative size as far as length, width, what have you? Do you have any idea in comparison for, for what the board is about to auth, potentially?
In comparison, it is about half, i- i- if they paved the entire stretch, it would be half of what the, it would be half of the four thousand dollars. But I'm thinking more or less that it's more going to be spot repairs as opposed to paving the entire stretch.
Not to, Dan, not to, you know, the board can do whatever it likes with this. I mean, we have them staged. We have a, a safety issue. If I would make a recommendation, it would be besides this motion, if the board is comfortable giving an authorization on the second part with an amount not to exceed the same way. So if we said for the second part that we're talking about after meetings to be approved, provided the amount doesn't exceed three thousand or whatever number you went, I would argue to you in the end that we could do another four thousand on that without really too much financial concern or having to finagle anything. But again, if the board is not comfortable with that, my only issue is, is if they're out there doing that work and it came out being twenty-two hundred, we could have them get it done, be safe, protect ourselves and cover ourselves with a pre-arranged amount for the board. If it came out much more than that, then we'd have to stop them on the second and obviously bring it back to the board with an updated estimate.
Kirk, to your point, that's a good point. So Kirk, Andy, this may be back to you, I guess, or, or maybe you, Kirk. Same contractor, they could do it in a single mobilization. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we'd save money on M O B and D M O B.
Yeah, the, the only, the only thing that I would caution against is that it seems like the failure of the bike path in this instance is, is sinkholes and so until you, until you do a little bit more investigation, you're not going to know the scope.
So I, I, I understand that. Is there, what's then, and we're, we're kind of jumping to the second piece where we didn't have a motion, but I'll ask anyway, I guess. What's the relative level of risk of starting, let's say we, let's say we went with four thousand as a not to exceed for the second part. But what do you think the level of risk is of, of exceeding that amount once we, once you do your inspections and understand that? Learn more about the scope.
I, I would say that it, it's not a, I would say that the likelihood of it exceeding four thousand dollars is low.
Okay.
Seventy-five, twenty-five. Let's, let's put it, i- if that, if we're gonna go with percentages.
And when would they actually initiate the work? I'm, I'm thinking before our next meeting if we would ever want to have this.
I would, they're, they're finished with the, the, the bid work for the, for the Bike Path Maintenance Project. So I would, I would expect them to be mobilized and, and complete the work immediately, given the emergency nature of it.
Okay, thank you. So a- any other board comments or questions on, on this first motion?
I'm not sure if it's a first motion or not. But I, I've been over there. The work looks good so far. But you originally started talking about the new area and I thought you used the word potholes and I was going to ask, is that something we could just fix, you know, as we fix potholes? But then you said sinkholes and I know you haven't had a chance to look at them yet, but you know, are these big pottle? Like what, I'm a little concerned that we're scoping something out that we really don't have enough information on.
Understand. So to my knowledge, they are roughly the size of a manhole cover, three feet diameter.
So does it make any sense if we just wait on both pieces of it until we hear back? Or are you saying that it's of such size that we're concerned about safety and we want to get it moving ASAP?
I, I, I would think that there, you know, i- i- if we could do the investigation and get a more accurate scope, that, I don't want to speak for Public Works here, but I, I think that Public Works would be able to at least put, implement safety measures to make sure that the public is safe in, in the interim. My, but my concern would be that then I'm coming back for another mobilization of the contractor to, to pay extra for work that that might not be already authorized.
I was wondering if we should push them both off, but.
Suzanne, to your point, are they already mobilized? Or, or are they somewhere else? And then Suzanne, to your exact point, would, would, could we hold off and have one M O B for these two specific issues?
No, it would be, they're, they're already mobilized and, and discussions with, that I've had with the contractor. in, in discussions with uh, that I've had with the contractor. Um, I don't believe he's going to charge us for an additional mobilization, um, if it's, if it's done shortly, but I can't speak to his, what he would say if we told him, okay, come back in three weeks and do it.
Okay, that's good to know. Save money, save money, save money.
Just so you're aware, Greg Hucklebridge, without being specific, describes the size of the holes as huge. Um, and as far as doing them in-house, I believe he believe, you know, that in terms of like a normal patch job that we would do for a pothole, that that wouldn't be something that he believes, not that we couldn't do it, but that would address the scope of the problem in such a way that it has a, a long-lasting um, meaningful repair.
Thank you both.
Any other board comment or questions? All right, Monica, do we have any public comment on this issue?
No public comment on this issue.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, so I will call to question.
I think we need to amend it to add the not to exceed on the second part.
It, well, that, that's the, that's the, that's where I was gonna see if we wanted to have amend the first motion to include the second part. Or if we wanted to have two separate motions where we could do a separate not to exceed amount for the second part. Is there any, any recommendation, Dave, or does it matter?
Really doesn't matter.
Okay.
As long as the record's clear on what your intent is.
Okay. So, the original maker of the motion, did, would you like to amend or handle it as, as two?
Let's handle it as two.
Okay, fair enough. E- either way, I think works. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Would anyone like to make uh, the second motion related to this item?
I'll make the second motion.
I'll second the second motion.
So, if I may ask for clarity, do we, uh, the second motion, there was some, some discussion about uh, I threw out the number four thousand, just, just because that was the first one. Uh, do we want to, should we be more specific on the not to exceed amount for the second motion? And if so, please pro- provide a recommendation, uh, Mr. Focle or, or Mr. Ferguson.
Um, I think if you did it that way, you would say an amount not to exceed four thousand, in that way, especially if during Andy's evaluation, if he gets clarity that it's gonna be more than that, then we, we come back to the board.
Okay, and, i- i- am I correct in assuming you're okay with that, you're able to uh, adjust to that amount within the given, within our current budget?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion. Uh, well, actually, we don't have a motion. James, did you wanna make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion uh, for the amount not to exceed four thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Do I have to second the second again, the second?
I think John seconded before you asked the question, am I correct? So, we have a motion and a second. Any board comment on this one, since we, I know we just discussed it? Okay, Monica, any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion is?
Aye.
You say aye and raise your hand? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Right, Andy, do you have anything else to report to the board?
Uh, nothing specifically. You have my engineer's report, if you have any questions, I'll be here all night.
Uh, I guess, um, have, do we have any more information on the um, I, the uh, the rain garden issue? Uh, has that moved on?
Corner?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so uh, the co- the developer has been out there to plant the trees that were included in our landscape uh, punch list. So basically, they went out there and planted trees and, and uh, took down some silk fence that was left from the construction. Uh, they submitted a sketch plan of the rain garden to us for review. I had some comments, um, not to get too far in the weeds, but some technical comments on uh, just basically how water would get in there and, and, and get into um, the underdrain from, from the surface. Um, I sent that sketch plan over to the residents. Uh, I spoke with several residents uh, last week. They are in the process of reviewing it and expect to get comments back to me by the end of this week, which I will then forward to the developer, um, and then they will adjust the ske- sketch plan or, or not, they, 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 they can come back to me with um, comments on it, but uh, then they will submit to the Bucks County Conservation District, who will review and approve. Then it will get implemented.
And thank you. And then, um, yes, Ms. Blundy?
Oh, if you're not done, go ahead, Dan.
No, I wa- I was just gonna ask, um, I, and this may be the manager's report, so if it is, just tell me. Uh, I was, I believe there was a uh, multi-committee meeting recently regarding the uh, our soon-to-be constructed uh, multi-use trail around the ballfields near the township building. Um, are there any updates from that, from the engineer's perspective, or is that, Kirk, something that you wanted to discuss?
Uh, I have no, I have nothing on that.
Okay. I will hope. Ms. Blundy, you have a question?
Yeah, Andy, um, the paving that they did on Mirror Lake, um, they were gonna install some signal reflectors?
Yeah, you, you mean on uh, Heacock Road?
Yeah, when it crosses over, mhm.
Yes.
So, I, I'm, they weren't there yesterday, they weren't there today. Do we know when they're gonna finish that up?
It's uh, it's on the punch list of items, in talking with the contractor, they'll get to it as soon as they can. I do know that that is a um, uh, it's on our punch list and there is a subcontractor that ti- that typically installs that, so I will reach out to them and find out what the schedule is uh, for addressing the punch list, but um, yeah, I, I, I would expect that to happen within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I saw trucks out there today and got excited, but they were PennDOT trucks, and I think they were doing some street cleaning, which is a different kind of excitement, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, uh, item number nine, I believe, Monica, this may be for you or is this Kirk for you? It's Community Day twenty twenty. And I apologize if you hear background noise, um, there's some thunder boomers uh, outside the window here, I think. I'll mute if it gets too loud.
That's for you.
Okay, um, today, I'm here to talk a little bit about the unfortunate, um, you know, co- how COVID nineteen is going to affect Community Day. I, today, I'm making the recommendation that we have to cancel Community Day in its entirety, um, due to the COVID nineteen virus, that we cannot offer any version of this event in a way that um, follows the green guidelines by Governor Wolf's um, orders. Nor do we know that we will be in the green phase, or red phase, or yellow phase at that time. Uh, Community Day usually attracts four thousand, six thousand or more uh, people each year. Uh, social distancing will still be a consideration, if even in the green phase. Um, we don't necessarily have use of the school fields. Um, most fireworks shows in the area are canceled, and um, then if we do hi- uh, have fireworks, you know, people will come from out of town, more so than ever, to come see them, because everybody's looking for something to do. Um, so that is my recommendation today. Instead, I do recommend that we do much smaller level events throughout the whole summer and into the fall, um, as long as we're in the green phase. Uh, running everything that we do do um, by the Bucks County Department of Health for approval. And, I mean, that's really all I have right now, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Monica, for that, that's. One, one, one of my per- personal favorite things to do is, is uh, go in the dunk tank as, as uh, Dr. Weiss heckles me as people throw balls, it uh, it drives up the participation rates, I think. Um, so I'm, I'm personally gonna miss that, um. It's, what a year. Uh, any comments or questions from the board on any of this stuff?
Yeah. Oh.
What?
Yeah, I'm disappointed that we're gonna have to do that, Monica. Um, but, the, the Community Day was supposed to be first weekend in September?
It was supposed to be August twenty-nine.
August twenty-nine. Um, I know this isn't relevant to Community Day and, but, two, two weeks later is September eleventh. Uh, do we have any um, Plan Bs?
We're still looking at September eleventh in some capacity, but um, I don't have an option for that yet. I think we can wait a little longer for planning for that, um, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty adapt, we can adapt late, later in the game for that. Uh, um, so I'm just looking at a couple of different options, maybe remote, maybe coming up with some kind of plan to social distance. I'm a little nervous about September eleventh being on a Friday evening. Um, generally, there's more participation when it is on a weekend, but um, I don't have anything to report on that yet, maybe the next meeting or the following.
Any, any other board comments or questions on the Community Day? Okay. Well, Mon- Monica, we, we appreciate all of the work you've been doing with, with the leagues to try and give them opportunities to uh, give township youth an, an opportunity to still recreate and get some energy uh, out, and uh, all of the, the, you know, I, I, the two uh, movies that you were talking about, just providing some alternative recreation activities. So we appreciate you being nimble, thoughtful and creative to provide options to, that, that may not be the, the typical that we, we would typically have, so I appreciate that, and keep them coming if, if you can. I know there's only so much we can do in our given circumstance. Um, Mr. Trulow, do we need any sort of motion on this, or can, can, is this just a general uh?
No, it's a, it's general information, well, I think uh, you know, not that I have to tell Monica or Kirk how to do it, obviously, an announcement on the website and any other the touch of Facebook blast, anything like that, that puts people on notice, but there's no formal requirement for a vote here, I don't think. As I said before, it was just a calendaring event that the board was approving, but from a, you know, a general consensus perspective, if I'm not mistaken.
Monica, it, could, could we stand up against the wall and allow people to throw water balloons at us to raise money for the for the schools or whatever?
I'd have to look into that, some options, if someone
All right.
Water of some kind of, you know.
I'm sure you would.
Handle the uh, the dunk tank again.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate what you're doing. All right, Mr. Ferguson, I believe, uh, moving on to project updates?
Yeah, I have a variety of, I have a variety of things I'd like to cover first, in projects, but also relatives. So first, um, Supervisor Grunier, you had asked at the last meeting about some road issues on Maple, about concerning um, work that's going on with the bridge. Uh, has continued to work with their staff um, to try to get a specific answer and a pinpoint um, timeframe on working with us. Um, that has not been productive. So, um, I had instructed the Public Works Director to write a letter to Mr. Resta, who's the executive director with uh, the Delaware uh, River Joint Bridge Commission that went out earlier this week. We will then specifically follow up with the executive director, I'll say next week, about um, about um, getting together, whether it's a virtual meeting, going out on site to look at the issues. Mr. Hucklebridge um, was specific with some of the concerns that uh, we know exist over there, and I'll make sure I report back to the board the results of that.
Very much appreciated.
Okay, um, regarding uh, let me just, I wanna make sure I go in order here. Um, Sandy Run Road Supervisor Lewis had asked in the last meeting, and we've had some initial discussions with Michael Baker and Associates regarding Sandy Run Road. Um, while we would hope to beat these timeframes potentially, we're setting the um, design being completed and presented to the board by October first. Some of the delays that took place relating to COVID with the survey work and with a variety of things that happened um, is, is pushing that to be the date, so to continue to run that string out, um, if there's a presentation to the board, even let's say in the late September, second September meeting, where there was an authorize, uh, we're seeing a design presentation essentially, where there would motion to bid. If you put that out for thirty days, we'd be looking at a motion, or I'm sorry, a bid time that would be somewhere around November first. So essentially, in the end, we'd be looking that this would be crossing years to get the work done. Um, we were tight before, but with that six-week or so delay and some of these uh, other constraints, I mean, the good news is essentially you ha- you have the bid out, um, and potentially awarded before the end of the year, then it would just be weather-sensitive as far as getting that work done. Um, so that's the timeframe right now for Sandy Run. Um, concerning the multi-use trail, last week, the Citizens Traffic Committee, the uh, EAC and the Park and Rec Board met regarding that proposal, that project. I think it was favorably received, um, and the intent would be to bring that to the next board meeting for a public presentation, um, before that's submitted to um, PennDOT for approval, uh, that is, being funded primarily through a grant. Um, there's been quite a bit of work over a couple of years, um, and that'll, that should happen at the next meeting. Um, I will have something uh, in regards to the Route three thirty-two in the Mirror Lake Signal Interconnection Project. Um, that project was brought all the way um, to uh, uh, to be prepared for bid by our previous traffic engineer. There's been a couple of questions and regarding that submission from our current traffic engineer, that the hope is to have that resolved, that we'll have something more specific to report on the fifteenth. Um, I did give a previous memo regarding um, the Big Oak Makefield Road Turn Lane Project, which is more of a signal project and, and physical upgrade with some possibilities there at the last meeting. Um, is there any questions about any of those projects?
Anyone?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk, it's a great summary. Do you wanna slide right into your uh, manager's report?
I do, but I'd like to add a couple of things, um, beyond the items on there to start with. Um, today, we received the um, June Real Estate Transfer Report. And so that report for this month showed thirty-three property transfers, um, totaling um, eighty thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Um, our budgeted average, if you were to do our average every month, would show a need to collect a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And these tend to be the big months, or even when it's slower in the winter, that we get above that average. So to break that down more specifically, after six months, our budgeted average would show a need to hit the budget number of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We are currently at about five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, so we are short about two hundred and thirty-six thousand. Um, however, I, I, I will point out, um, we do have a much better sense of properties that are, are gonna be going on the market or in the process of selling, based on the the lateral ordinance with the inspections, and we have had dozens of them in. So, again, I'm, I'm very hopeful for a better July. We'll continue to monitor that, and I'll give you an update on that every month. Um, but that is where the real estate transfer number sits, um, relative to the finances in golf. It's really called back in, when the COVID pandemic began, we penned out various scenarios with golf, depending upon when the opening date would be. Um, after a couple of days going over with Mike Atara, their finance director, and our own, and our own financial projections, where we are right now, um, just to put it in perspective, we were anticipating the need to assist the golf course, budgeted, to, to assist the golf course with the debt of about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, right now, um, the estimate would be that the assistance that the township would need to provide would be three hundred and Right now, the estimate would be that the assistance that the township would need to provide would be $393, which is not far off the estimate that we'd outlined with the May 1st opening. So that is about another $140,000 that we'll need to come up with out of the general fund for that. Golf has been doing well. You know, it's, 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 you know, the other aspects of the operation that have needed to be sort of scaled back a bit. Food and beverage, you know, we've been, it's, 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 that's not hitting the budgeted numbers, but I'll continue to work with them to give those updates. As they go, I also have my update on all of the various components that we're evaluating that are volatile and those that aren't, you know, building permits and what have you that do constitute a healthy portion of our budget as well as property tax collection. As a reminder to the board, you all extended the face period of taxes from June 30th to July 31st. So it's not really an apples to apples comparison at the end of face at this point, since we're still going as far as where we are from this year to last as an example. So that'll be coming as well. I don't know if there's any questions about any of that.
No, those are sobering numbers, Kurt. Thank you for providing this.
If you referred, so I have several items in my manager's report that are, I'm asking for consideration for tonight, as we brought up at the last meeting. We have this Walk Works Grant application, which is essentially getting grant money to do a, a, an update to our, our, our trail plan, our bike path plan to sort of fill these gaps. Remington Vernic, per the request of our staff, had provided a cost estimate somewhere around $19,400, I believe. The grants are for $10,000 to $20,000. The grant application is actually due tomorrow, so we have it prepped. We gave those details, so I'm asking the board to, for consideration to submit that planning grant application through the Pennsylvania Department of Health Works, Health Walk Works Program for an update to the adopted master bike path.
So moved. Doctor, just to make sure I heard you, Dr. Weiss, you seconded, correct? Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from the board? All right, Kurt, I'll just say nice, nice job identifying this, this grant to try and, try and get some money for the township, for a worthy project. Monica, any public comment on this one? Monica, any public comment?
No comment.
Sorry.
Thank, okay. Hearing none. I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
The next item, I'm sorry, the next item I'd like to ask for consideration is something new and unusual in that there is a new grant contract system for certified local governments, which we are. There is a master grant contract that the township, if approved tonight, could sign with the Pennsylvania Historic and, and Museum Commission for Certified Local Governments. That will allow the township to more seamlessly get grants that we apply for under this program in the future. And it's sort of an umbrella agreement that if we get money, we don't have to go through all of these processes that you're aware to have someone to sign and come back to the board. So if the board, the agreement itself was put in your packet, if the board agrees, we'd make a motion to authorize the execution of the Certified Local Government Grant Agreement between the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission and Lord Makefield Township.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Kurt, are there any, I'll say membership, I'll, I'll, I'll term, I'll use the term membership fees for lack of a better, but are there any, any fees associated with this program? No? Okay. And Dave, from an agreement perspective, have you reviewed and are you okay with the terms and conditions of this?
I, I haven't reviewed all the, the details, but I've seen this, this type of application before, and right now it's just the application part, so. Obviously, if there's conditions attached, if we get the grant awarded, we'll have to look at that more closely, but administration is certainly very capable of, of addressing the issues that are contained in the original application.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. I'm just looking through some of the conditions right now. Any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, then I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
An annual item that we always cover here is a motion to accept a fuel bid award as recommended by the Bucks County Consortium. You have a memo in your packet from Greg Hucklebridge. So just to be specific, in the end, there's not going to be year-long fuel quotes. They are, they are relative to the delivery charge. Those quotes, those prices can move and they're set by a, a variety of factors with fuel. We do get, we do have an advantage as a local government that we are exempt from all of the various gas taxes that we know can make the price of fuel go up. So I'm asking for consideration to, to accept the 2021 Fuel Bid Award as recommended by the Bucks County Consortium.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the board?
Kurt, am I reading this correctly? That it's a little bit more than last year?
Right.
Okay.
About, about a, about a tenth of 1% or so.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Monica, any public comment on this item? I'll say Monica or Kyle, because I think Kyle's.
No comment.
All right, thank you very much. All right, hearing no more comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Last item, as I had mentioned before, we will have the presentation next week about the community trail. This is a, I'm asking for approval for a resolution to, the, the resolution to set forth reimbursement agreement between, between the, the, between Lord Makefield Township and the reimbursement agreement for the community. I, I apologize, I bungled that, but it's just the agreement that once we start work is in place. So as we go and hit milestones that we can seek reimbursement when we hit those miles.
I make a motion authorizing signature for the Transportation Alternate Set Aside Program reimbursement grant agreement.
Motion, anyone on a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, seconds. Any board comment or question? Monica, Kyle, any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Is that it, Kurt? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Trulow, you're, you're up.
Briefly, and not to be outdone by Mr. Polkell, I am actually sitting physically in my office at 777 Township Flying Road, Suite 250, which is located in the western edge of Lord Makefield Township. There was an executive session tonight that began at 7:00, and it was attended by all supervisors who were present at this meeting, as well as Chief Kaluzi and myself. Items related to litigation, personnel and informational items were discussed at the executive session, which concluded around 7:25, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Before the board tonight is only one appeal from the, to the zoning hearing board. Jeffrey Schultz Bank is requesting a variance for property located at 1087 Bancroft Lane in order to permit a construction of a fence within a sanitary sewer easement. Because this involves a sanitary sewer easement, there may be more access issues and some oversight required by some township employees from the Sewer Department or Public Works. So in this particular instance, we would recommend if the board is so inclined to direct us to participate on behalf of the township, just to make sure that the township's interests through the Sewer Department are adequately addressed. So if it would be necessary, if that's your inclination.
Okay, would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion for the zoning, for us to participate in the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Okay, Mr. McCartney, second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hey, Mr. Trulow, who from the, on this particular, so it's a little bit unique, who from the township would be participating on our behalf, other than?
Well, I, you know, I have to talk to Ms. Kirk from my office. My, my initial reaction, and I'll defer to Kurt, would be to have Mr. Hucklebridge to see, not to give him more work to do, but I think given his background and what he does, he would be the most appropriate person probably to have there, but I will leave that to the administration to make that determination.
It's probably a fair assumption. Okay, so we have, we have a motion in a second. Monica or Kyle, any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion in a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Anything else tonight, Mr. Trulow?
Not for me.
All right. So no zoning inspections and planning. As I said earlier, originally, public comment would occur right now on the original published agenda, so in case we have any additional public commentators that called in late because of following the agenda. Monica, do we have anyone on the line for public comment?
No public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on. Next time, we discussion items. We do not have any on the agenda. And then we will move on to supervisors' reports. Dr. Weiss, do you have anything to report tonight?
The Historic Commission met and discussions on the, the zoning overlay were, were had, and I think Dr. Heinz made those comments public. And the Environmental Advisory Board has participated in the joint committee presentation on the multi-use trails. I think that's been going over. The, there are no other reports. Thanks.
Thank you for that. I'll go next quickly. I say this in jest only because Mr. Polkell and Mr. Trulow have said the same, but I am currently sitting in my house, hopefully not seeing any more heat lightning or hearing any more thunder coming down. The Sewer Authority met immediately before this, this meeting. We had some, I think, very positive updates on, on projects. Very high-level summary for, for board members. It looks like most of the projects that we've heard discussed over the last several weeks, we will be getting, the bids are due in August, generally speaking. We also have very positive movement on the Stackhouse project. You may recall that there were some landowner agreements that were somewhat still outstanding that have at least verbally been worked out, so that's very positive for Stackhouse has two components, and both components appear to be lining up to move forward, which is, it's a good one. And thus far, all projects are moving forward as planned, so that was nice to hear earlier. Ms. Blondie, do you have any updates?
I don't want to dismiss Citizens Traffic because they did participate in that joint meeting, but since we've heard about it three times, I'll just move along. The Financial Advisory Commission met last night, and they probably will not be meeting over the rest of the summer. I will be reaching out again to my friends on Economic Development to talk to them about possibly combining those two committees moving forward, and that is all I have.
Do you expect a recommendation to come from those two for the board to consider?
That's what you guys had told me. That's what you had said last year, Dan, that I should reach out to the groups, so yes. And Economic Development, when they last met, had told me that they thought that was what they would do, wanted to do. Certainly, Financial Advisory had written a letter to the board, I think, after you directed them to, because you were the liaison last year when the letter came in. So when EDC said it, I said, could you just put it in writing? I, that has not happened yet. I'm sure that they've been otherwise occupied with COVID and other issues, but I will follow up with that so we can either move forward on that or move forward with two different committees.
Much appreciated. Generally speaking, those two committees are very interested in whatever they might recommend for a charter moving forward, that's all. As, as we've discussed, I'm just curious. All right, you know what? Mr. McCartney, I'm going to skip you for a second because I might, I'm going to anticipate someone might call in to ask you a few questions, so I'll move forward very quickly. Mr. Lewis, do you have any updates?
I'm broadcasting from my personal residence at 1550 Suri Book Court. If we had a little more time to me, I would take you through a video tour, but I'm getting new carpet and you don't want to see the house. It's a mess. I have no other report at this time.
Appreciate that. I have a three-year-old. You don't want to see the, you don't want to see my floor. All right, Mr. McCartney, any updates?
Yes. So the Airport Review Panel met on Monday night. As you all know, we received an email this afternoon at about 4:05 from Richard Preston. It was a LMTARP memo to BOS. It is a two-page memo, and I would request that this memo be added to the record for tonight's meeting.
Mr. McCartney, not, not to discuss the entire length of the memo, but there were, I believe, there could use, there were four requests of the board at the very end, I believe.
Correct, yeah. The specific asks of the board. Item number one, we asked that the BOS review the FAA letter to Congressman Fitzpatrick and provide comments on the FAA response to help formulate a response back to the FAA. Item number two, we asked that the BOS directly ask the freeholders when the PA public or virtual meeting will be held so we can inform our residents. Item number three, we asked the BOS, ask the freeholders to inform the board when the EA for the terminal expansion is released so that a fair review of that document can be made. And item number four, we asked the BOS to request community meetings with local politicians be restarted, and the board support efforts to reach out to more federal representatives to support this effort and bring pressure to the FAA.
Thank you for that. All right, any other updates from board members?
We do have a comment on this, I think.
Okay.
To Richard.
Mr. Okay, Mr. Preston. Hello, Richard, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, usual, usual approach here. Please state your name and your, your address, and then please provide your comment.
Sure. Richard Preston, 1522 Stapler Drive, Yardley. So the, the board, the, the panel did meet with the public Monday. We had a lot of good inputs from people, and we have a lot of inputs from, from our own panel members who are reviewing things going on at the airport, and as you saw from the letter, the airport is going through a very rapid series of projects to try to increase their capacity, and that's pretty alarming to us. I mean, the, the budget numbers they're going for are, if you total all their projects, it's like $177 million, which is, in this, you know, current time, is just pretty amazing to think that they're going to put that much money, which mostly is federal money, so it's very appropriate that the PA residents be concerned with what this expenditure is and how they're going to recoup it through passenger fees, which are going to be down for years to come. So the memo, you know, I put in was addressing those details as well as some of the other things that have been going on with respect to Congressman Fitzpatrick's efforts, the FAA's complete ignoring of a congressional mandate in the last, the FAA reauthorization bill, where the Congressional Quiet Skies Caucus had requested that the FAA start considering more reasonable noise, noise rules that, other than the 24-hour average, to reflect what people actually experience. And the FAA just has come back with a pretty, you know, pretty negative response to that. And we think that's inappropriate, and we should be pushing back on the FAA's response, you know, to that mandate. And so we think congressional help could And so we think congressional help could, you know, could help bolster that argument back to the FAA. So there are a number of different items in that memo, as I'm sure you've seen, and, but we wanted to keep it down to a couple specific requests that were very practical and actionable, and that's why the four that were read are in there. That's all, that's all I've got to say.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Preston, as always.
Okay.
Dan, we also.
Thanks, Richard.
We also have Sue on the line.
Okay, okay. Hi, Sue, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you please, as usual, please state your name and your address.
Sure, Sue Herman, Residence for Regional Traffic Pollution Think, PO Box two eighty-five, Newtown, Pennsylvania. We are grateful for the entiring efforts of the airport review panel, and we are interested in hearing the four points that they asked the board to follow up on verbatim from the letter and the email they submitted to the supervisors. Can someone please read those?
I believe I just did.
Yes, Sue, Mr. McCartney read those, read the four specifically.
Yeah, Sue, I, I read them after I asked.
Or, or did you? Or did you just read point four?
No, no, I read points one through four after I asked the, the entire letter entered into the record for tonight's meeting.
Okay, how can we get a copy of that letter?
Did?
How can residents get a copy of that letter? And, and how can we be apprised of how quickly you will follow up on those issues that the review panel asked you to follow up on?
I'm going to have to default to Dave. How, how does the residence, I mean, if it's part of the record, they can ask for part of tonight's meetings, minutes?
They, they could, well, they could do that, or, I mean, there's certainly a right to no request, but I think, you know, as Curtis said previously, I think it's just a request to administration for something like that, and it could be produced by email, I would think.
Okay, I'll send Mr. Ferguson an email then. And we ask that the board address these items on an expedited basis because the exponential expansion of Trenton Mercer Airport is going to make our property values plummet greatly in addition to harming the health of our residents and families and tainting our drinking water with PFOS and PFOA, which Mr. Grenier will tell you is not something that you can remedy. So this is an urgent matter that needs urgent action on the part of the board. Can you put this item on the agenda at the next meeting and report back to us as to when those meetings will resume? Can you also report back to us as to when, and we would appreciate it that it be in September, so people are not on their vacations, when you will put the item on your agenda that we've asked you to put on there, which is the Trenton Mercer Airport Public Education Discussion, where you educate us as to the toxic effects of unleashed PFOS and PFOA in our drinking water and the toxic effects on our family's health, and also have politicians up through the federal level be present who can tell us their strategy for avoiding such contamination of our drinking water. We'd like the commitment that you put that agenda on your, that you put that item on your agenda and early in the agenda at a September Board of Supervisors meeting. Residents are concerned, and we want maximum action on the part of our politicians through the federal level to take care of our health, safety, and welfare.
We appreciate your comments, Sue. And I, I know you're already doing this, but I'll just say it anyway. On your, on the, the item number four about, about, I'll summarize, restarting the public officials' meetings that have been held throughout last year and probably into early this year. I was not part of the earlier ones this year. The township doesn't drive those meetings, or hasn't historically. So there are several players that would need to attend, and I, and we can talk to them to see their, gauge their interest and encourage them, but I encourage you to do, to do the same as, as I'm sure you're doing.
Mr. Grenier, Mr. Grenier, the stakes are so high here. The citizens have, they are no longer going to do the job of being the driver to those meetings. It's the responsibility of the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors to care for our health, safety, and welfare. You have the funds if there's a need to pursue any legal action on our behalf, and we're not playing the game of passing the ball any longer, finger pointing and blame. It's your responsibility to be the prime mover on this issue, and we're putting it in your lap to do so. The citizens are going to be educating citizens. If you don't wish to get out in front of it and lead, that's your choice, but I can tell you the citizens are going to be educated as to how high the stakes are. And it will be everyone in Bucks County who loses. So our Board of Supervisors can make a choice. Do they want to leave? Or do they not want to leave? But the citizens are going to be informed as to your actions or non-action. We're no longer going to be the prime movers.
We appreciate your comments, Sue. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Monica, any, any additional comments?
Nope, no more.
All right, thank you. All right, any other business to report? Hearing, hearing none. Actually, Mr. Trulow, do we need to vote on adjournment, or can I just do it?
Normally, it's voted on. It's a motion to adjourn.
Okay. John, are you making that motion?
Second.
Okay, please note that Supervisor Lewis made a hand-raising gesture to make that motion, and Supervisor McCartney seconded that motion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Want to hang out some more? All right, have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Have a good one.